Either way, right?
Well, it's gonna have to come off the harbor because the intention is, is to clear everything out. The, the, how is, you know, the appropriate way to get it taken down? Is there a way that we can get it done for nothing and when Mr. Oliver gets in the building? Or is somebody else willing to pay us for it and they get it? You know, that's, that's what the request for proposal allows. It, it opens it up so that everybody can submit whatever their proposal is to do.
So basically by approving of item D is just open it up for-
Exactly.
Could happen. Or, yeah.
More of the other.
And at that point then you can come back and consider and do.
Of course, we're talking about, you know, turn away liability from the city because you'll find somebody. I know you've got plenty of people capable of doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, so for item B, do you got anything else, Matt?
No, that's it.
Counsel, anybody else has anything you might want to ask?
No.
So for item six D, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion that we authorize a city manager to issue a request for proposals to demolish and/or acquire the property at 405 Bigelow.
Second the motion.
All of first say aye.
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 This will bring us to item number seven, review and discuss allow mobile food establishments in the city limits of Aransas Pass.
Okay, um, I'm just on your, are we just copying a draft that was done for mobile food establishments? Um, the city manager said you go to the aquatic center area kind of as a concession, this is a supplement, a pool. Um, so this is just allowing that and Robert, you, you talk about a little bit about like you did in the, on this draft?
Um, yeah, it's just an ordinance that would allow us, mobile food establishments, food trucks to come to the city. Uh, and kind of set up shops in various places, but it also allows us to regulate them to say where they can't go, where they can't go, and kind of take an order. That's essentially all the ordinance is.
Have people approached you on this issue?
We've kind of talked, I've noticed that the ordinance that you have, uh, there is an exemption for snowcombs. And for people that sell uncracked nuts. That's an odd exemption, but I figure with all the hard development coming and everything that they're, you know, food trucks are going to count.
Yeah.
Like the odd, it's any kind of, you know, any place there's a opportunity for tourists. Figure if we go ahead and get the ordinance, that we're, we can regulate them.
They have a structure. I saw, I was at Padre Island this weekend and saw a couple of cutters out there too. And they were set up nice, it was good, there was, you know, some of them, they didn't stay overnight, they just wanted to come certain night peak hours.
There's one on the way to Rockwood on the left hand side.
Yeah.
It's, it's had a rockwood, it's some of the left hand side. Then there's one on the right hand side.
At that, yeah.
Where they say those, uh, pork ribs.
Yeah.
Marina.
Yeah, that marina.
Chief, break.
Would this work separate and apart too from the solicitor, peddler, or vendor? Or is it gonna work in conjunction?
The way I got it worked in the ordinance that I was working on, uh, they'd be required to get a peddler's permit.
Okay, so it works in conjunction with?
Right.
Okay.
Those peddler permits, is that like a monthly or annual or?
It depends on what you want to get, I think it goes up to a year.
Okay.
That's, uh, one month, no, three states and another year that you can get. And if at any point you're in violation, they can, the ordinance.
Forfeit.
You can pull your peddler permit and you're done.
I do believe probably with the development, it's the way things are moving here in Aransas Pass, I can see it coming.
You know, Mayor, too, it, it's good to have those regulated because we'll have people come in and set up food shops. And there's no checks and balances into the food that they're serving and that they're following proper rules and stuff like that in the state for safety reasons and stuff. So it's very good to have ordinance that's got you.
I have a question, do we currently allow them in the city?
Uh, they fall under the peddler vendor's permit and then we can go out and inspect. We just inspected one this past week that set up shop or we sent somebody over there to check on them. To make sure that they had their permitting in place because they also have to have food handlers permits and health and safety guidelines that have to follow.
Mr. Gomez, like he was saying, they get checked by the county also?
They can check by the county. They gotta get their permit first before they can actually use it.
If some of them though just show up and set up shop and they don't have anything.
They're supposed to go by the county because it's certificate file and everything.
They have to be a pretty vital department also.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
And that's part of what was in the ordinance there.
Okay.
That they have to have proper approval, uh, health certificates and all that.
All right.
So for item C, what's the pleasure of the council on that?
Actually, just to review and discuss.
Okay. And that's gonna bring us to item number eight. We're gonna consider an act on authorizing the city manager to issue a request for proposals for mobile food vendors at the Aquatic Center. Now this here, I'm sorry about this, Matty, but this here we're also, it's throughout Aransas, right? Or is it just specifically for the aquatic center?
I think the ordinance, she wants to make it specific to certain areas, but I don't, I don't think there's anything that's really allowing them to come in initially. So she's trying to get that open and then she invited my-
Right now, any mobile food displays are, I can't have them.
She wants to open that up and then she's gonna regulate it to certain places. And we really wanna get rid of concession, not get rid of concession, but we really can do very well in that area. So we want to focus on marketing, but we still want to provide and, and have a crew available for the people.
Right.
Uh, work in conjunction with the food truck or whoever, whoever decides to, to take that part. Or maybe even have different people coming in, you know, every week or however we work that out, but we still want to have that available. But we really want to focus more on marketing, you know, selling, um, different packages and different.
Right. The reason I'm asking to you is I know we have a gentleman that comes with the ice cream truck and stuff, hits the neighborhoods. So I was wondering how that would affect that kind of business. You know, we just say it's just the aquatic center, we just say something to look at throughout the whole city limits.
Right, because I was kind of concerned about that also, once, you know, we have Little League games going, are they gonna be parking out in the parking lot? Because I know the Little League has their own concession stand. What a way of kind of regulating for them to body to set up right there without, and just kind of under the radar and, and take some of the profits that the Little League uses for their own, you know, for their own fundraising.
I guess that would be part of it, you know, whatever structure, once that actually gets opened up to, to be able to allow that to come in, then they can go in and they can restructure and make, make it very, you know, pinpointed to give some of this implementation of like.
Okay.
All right. Do I hear a proposal for, for item number eight?
Well, I move that we authorize the city manager to issue a request for proposals for mobile food vendors in, at the Aquatic Center Park or just?
I'll second it.
All of first say aye.
Aye.
This will bring us to item number nine, considering an act on approving a request by Ms. Jane Dos, uh, waiving her water bill. What we got going on there, Don?
Um, Ms. Dos had a water bill, um, from July fifteenth to August fifteenth, um, at 121 Bayview in City by the Sea. Um, her bill was unusually high, the total amount of the bill was five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. She alleges that her, uh, house was vacant at the time and she couldn't possibly have used this amount of water. We explained to her that, you know, the water gone through the meter, we had the meter pulled, it was one of the older meters, it was tested. It was actually reading lower than, um, actual usage. Um, so her consumption was actually higher than, than what was billed, but she now has a radio meter. Um, there was no indication of a leak around the box. We explained that it could have been a stuck flapper or something like that. Um, and there was nothing we could do to, to make an adjustment, given that no one found any visible leak. Um, and she requested that we present it to you, um, to, to see about waiving her water bill.
Do, do you know what the normal consumption was?
The normal consumption at this address, JP or Stoss?
Yes, ma'am. She's behind you. We'll give you each.
In, in this time frame, uh, her normal consumption was roughly nine, nine hundred to thousand gallons. During this time frame, it jumped up to eighty-six, eighty-six thousand.
How you doing here?
We had had, and two other locations throughout the city, uh, vacant apartments where the, the foot flapper wrapped stock in. And in a thirty day period, reached over eighty thousand gallons. So that is a possibility, although you said that there were no leaks, nothing was wrong inside the house, so.
And that's a running commode, right?
Yes.
Yes.
There was nothing, uh, that we could see that didn't show that that an act. She said there was no leaks inside the house and the toilet was never run.
Ms. Dos is here.
Ms. Dos, if you mind? Yes, ma'am.
I am Jane Dos, I live at two one two Bayview. One to one Bayview is my rent house across the street. Uh, on Friday, August twenty-second, twenty fourteen, about two thirty P M, I saw a City of Aransas Pass employee, Philip, digging a hole on my rent house property at one twenty-one Bayview. The hole was about two feet by three feet and was dry around the water meter. I asked what was going on. Philip said he had a work order to change out the meter. When I asked who had requested the work order, he did not know. The house is for sale with a realtor and was empty since January twenty-fourteen. As I watched, a drip at a coupler on the exposed PVC line began to drip. I insisted that Philip fix it since it was not there previously. Uh, he called a supervisor and got permission to fix it. The let, I then received a letter from the city on August the twenty-fifth that was not accurate, nor was it signed. Since I was watching the employee work, it was a drip. And in the letter, the city suggested it was flow of one gallon per minute. The letter from August twenty-fifth states, while doing a meter upgrade, a leak was found approximately ten inches to twelve inches on your side away from the meter. It had been leaking approximately one gallon per minute. This normally is a repair that is the customer's responsibility. However, since we were working in the box, rather than inform you of the leak, we made the repairs at no cost to you. The end reading for the old meter was ten oh-two, the previous read was ninety-one thirty-nine, the consumption was eighty-six thousand three hundred gallons. This will result in a large bill. We wanted you to be aware of this before we sent you the bill and no signature. Now, since the house is for sale and vacant, I go in, I live two doors away.
Right.
I go in it at least once a week, make sure the counters are dusted, flush a toilet, that's it, but there were no toilets running. And since, uh, all the bills previously, which are record, were minimal bills. Uh, the yard was totally dry, August was drought. So was the hole that Philip had started digging until the connector broke. And the sand below the PVC pipe had been removed by this time and this, of course, there was nothing holding up the connector. A comfortable pool is only fifteen thousand to twenty thousand gallons of water. Eighty-six thousand three hundred gallons of water would made a swamp. This is just a little yard in front. I drive by it since I live a little farther.
Yes, ma'am.
Four to six times a day.
You wouldn't have noticed standing water, right?
No, no, no water in the street, nothing. And it's just a little yard and the grass was very dead. I sincerely believe that there is some error since all of this occurred at the same time as this meter change out. I ask for your consideration to cancel this charge.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any questions by council? No. No, thank you, ma'am. Donna, by any chance, did you speak with Mr. Robert, whoever from the city may have worked on it at that time? See if people remembered.
JP and I have talked about this extensively. Um, you know, this happens probably once every other month somewhere in the city that somebody has a really high bill. Given the type of, of soil we have here, um, water doesn't pond and pool, it, it just gets absorbed back in. Or if it's a stuck flapper, it goes down the drain. You know, we test the meters, we, we're confident the water flowed through the meter. Um, and once it flows through and it's on their side, you know, we've paid for it as a city and, and we have to purchase it, pay for it. So the question becomes, you know, does, did the rest of the residents pay for the water that went through Ms. Dos' meters? Did Ms. Dos pay for it? It's unfortunate, it happens, you know, whether it's a break at your house and your hot water heater or your flapper gets stuck or mine gets stuck. You know, it's, it's, we don't always know exactly what it is. Sometimes it'll be a break in line under a house that'll go for months. You know, we've got one like that and the, the customer is telling us they don't have a leak, they have a radio meter. And we are telling them there is a constant leak and they are telling us they're not. And for three months, they've had high bills and at some point they will be in here asking that their bill be forgiven. And all I can tell you is we keep telling them, you have a leak and you need a plumber to go out and fix it. And, you know, they're convinced because they don't see pooling water that there's nothing wrong. But, but we know from the meter there is.
From personal experience in my current house, I've had a large, large water bill when I first moved in. And then what I did was I dug up from the city's park all the way and I found the leak at the corner of my house going into the house when it was constructed. And that was a process of elimination with a good show of myself finding it. To, to find out where the leak was coming from.
Yeah. And so it's unfortunate, but that's, that's the reality of, of water plumbing, so.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm Donna Cox, I'm the finance director. I'm sorry, she's ill this evening, so I'm filling in.
Okay, just to clear this up, Sylvia Carillo is ill right now, so that's why she's not here. Donna's doing us the gracious effort of stepping in and helping to answer our questions to help us continue on and Eric also.
Sylvia is great, we like her.
Right. She just talked about the weather. So I'm just gonna leave it, she's ill, so I do ask, I pray, pray for her. But it's a good question. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, may I point out that there was no problem before or after that obvious situation? And again, the, the come to mind of somehow four swimming pools and the grass is dead and it's only a tiny yard. I ask that this be considered, this is not something that had to be repaired afterward, it didn't happen before. And unfortunately, the house is still empty.
Hey Donna, uh, when did you guys put the radio meter in?
Um, JP, do you?
We found that we had such a high consumption, what we normally do is we pull the meter to have a test.
Absolutely.
That was when it was changed out and the radio meter put in, so at that same time.
Do you know what, what month was that?
That was in, uh, August, August twenty-second.
So what is it now, do you know?
I'm sure now it's back down to, to normal, because we have it.
Minimal.
Yeah, just the minimal billing.
Before and it has been minimal since, except one, one.
It, it probably has increased maybe two hundred gallons, one to two hundred gallons from what it was previously. Now, the old meter.
Sure, it wasn't.
Wasn't registering, everyone wants to improve.
She was getting more water than, yeah.
Right.
Than what were accounted for.
Yes. So what is that, she is correct, it's probably using the same amount of water now.
How many gallons are you using right now, ma'am, if I may ask?
I.
I think she said nine hundred to a thousand. Yeah, I think.
Okay, nine hundred, a thousand?
Not more than, no, no, not more than a thousand.
I go in it weekly and the usage was twenty-eight, which means two thousand eight hundred, two thousand eight hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
I live at City by the Sea also. And years ago, and I don't know whether the policy is changing or not, but we would get a one time just if there was a problem with the water rating and the neighbors. We'd use it and we'd get one time to, for any period for a long period of time. And we don't know whether the city is changing that or we don't get any justice.
Used to.
That is true, approximately six, seven years ago, that was the case, the, the city would forgive one time a year, a certain amount of money. But however that happened, it came.
I will tell you currently, if there's a verifiable leak, um, that does not go into the sewer system, um, we will give people a sewer adjustment. But people in City by the Sea don't have sewage, so there can't be, you know, that adjustment. Normally, when you verify the leak, like in the, the line going from the meter into the house, if you know there's a break there, obviously the water went into the ground. We'll give someone a sewer adjustment on something like that. But she doesn't have a sewage ability to make the adjustment on and normally that helps pretty substantially.
Ms. Dos?
Since I was watching Philip dig this hole and since it was dry and since I literally watched the leak start. And that seemed to be the only point of change in this whole story. That was the only leak to be fixed right there. Is there any possibility that something could have happened in the change out of the meter to get this kind of reading? Because at no point did that much water flow in there, I mean, by the next morning, again, everything is blown dry.
I think it was the unusually high reading that generated the work order to get the meter changed out. The reading had already occurred.
Before the change out itself?
Exactly, that's when we see a spike like that. That's when we go.
When we just see a high degree, automatically we pull the meter to have a test before the customer was even aware that was happening, that was something we were doing appropriately proactive.
Oh, I have to phone that, right.
Yeah, I saw it on August twenty-second, that it was being changed out, being dug. And then I sent a letter that was dated, almost like that.
Well, you're gonna get a little water come out of those pipes when you pull the meter anyway, aren't you? It's gonna backflow.
Right, but they want to like cut off at the, um.
You should turn on curb stop.
The curb stop, that's it.
So just whatever's in that residue in that line is what just comes out.
A little bit could come in.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Dos is, uh, we looked all over the house everywhere and we could not find any reason for that amount of water to be flowing through, other than to be the register.
The meter did register. Okay, thank you, ma'am. On item number nine, what is the pleasure of the council?
Well, I know that Mrs. Dos wants us to forgive, but I would say just to me, just halfway, my proposal is just half for the bill. That's my proposal.
Anyone else?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All of first say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Split the difference, basically, what the bill is.
Because I know the city had to pay it anyway, so.
The whole amount.
The whole amount.
This will bring us to item number ten. We're gonna consider an act on approval purchase budgeted equipment and safety items for Aransas Pass Public Works. Let's get to that.
As I mentioned earlier, um.
We're gonna make it come up, sorry.
As I mentioned to you earlier, uh, we're in desperate need of, uh, equipment at Public Works. Currently, the only maintainer we have is from nineteen seventy-seven. The last time equipment was purchased with Public Works was in two thousand and four, so it's been ten years. The excavator we have is a mini Bobcat.
Right.
Where you can't do much with. The backhoe, we only have one that's working right now and is shared between utilities, streets, and the sewer plant. So we're asking, uh, to allow us to purchase this equipment, we're gonna, uh, for bids already through, uh, buy board. This equipment will allow us to go out and actually fix streets and do repairs on water lines with more ease and better, uh, quality. Uh, we have one item on there for financing, which is our asphalt spreader. This will allow us to actually go and pave roads and actually compact them correctly and avoid all these potholes that keep occurring because it's.
Right.
We can't just go out there and, and lay asphalt on a road if the subgrade is failing. By us going in there and fixing it correctly with a new maintainer in the road or redo the compaction and come in with the asphalt and lay it out. So that we avoid all these other issues that we're having right now. So this item's worth budgeted for at the beginning of the year during, for this fiscal year's budget and we're just asking approval to the department.
Do we actually have a stockpile of asphalt or would we just buy it from?
We would have to buy it as, as needed.
And the, and on the tack trailer as well, we'd need to purchase oil for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any way to store that or we just buy it as we needed it?
We buy it as we need it.
Okay, perfect.
And I know we've been demolishing the concrete and crushing and stuff, we're gonna be using that for road base from the harbor or?
They're actually gonna use that back for the harbor, um, for the tiebacks to fix the, the areas that are there in need of repair.
Any other questions? Billy, right?
No.
I'm good.
I am gonna ask real quick, the mosquito sprayer, how quick to get it fixed?
We're buying two mosquito sprayers.
Okay, good. Good, I know it says that we need it.
Right now.
Okay, for item number ten, do I hear, uh, an approval, a motion for approval for item number ten?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the budgeted equipment and safety items for Aransas Pass Public Works Department.
Second the motion.
All of first say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item number eleven, considering an act on building department items. Mr. Lawrence, item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eleven A is a public hearing on the request of Rocky Chakan and Kevin Pollak. To rezone from our seven A single family dwelling district to general business. Properties described as parts of lots six, seven, eight, and twenty-nine through thirty. Uh, pile addition, Aransas Pass property is currently zoned or seven A. Or is either Mr. Chakan or Pollak here? You wanna come forward, please? I would point out to the council that the planning zoning commission has previously considered this item and has, uh, recommended your approval. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Rocky Chakan, twelve oh-four, South Houston Street, Aransas Pass. We're looking at, you know, of course, it's, it's the property already has a zoning of general business across the front.
Right.
It's part of lots twenty-nine to thirty-four. So we're looking to go ahead and incorporate the rest of the part of six, seven, eight into general business to build, um, rental properties. Something a little more, you know, nicer and cleaner for the area to have, uh, to stay. A lot of people come stay at my house and I'd rather shove them off somewhere. Spring break is, is at my place, you think it's four days, so it's like, there's nowhere for these people to stay though. A lot of families are like, well, where do we stay, where do we stay? There's really nowhere. So we're looking at taking the property that we have now that, like I said before, has part of general business on it. To go ahead and, and, and start putting eight hundred square foot around the property space.
What is a street address?
Um, there's not one right now, but it would be considered for Arch and Highland Street is that.
Okay.
Or Highland and three sixty-one.
Okay. Members of the council, have any questions?
Thank you.
You said it already is zoned, is your, a general business a part of it?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Okay.
Lots twenty-nine through thirty-four are already zoned general business, which is touching our, part of our six, seven. which is touching part of our six, seven, eight, which is a lot.
And what type of rental properties are you looking to put in there?
Basically, if you go four hundred, five hundred yards south, you're gonna see the same exact proposal that we're planning on doing. Basically, eight, nine hundred square foot, two-bedroom colleges that are, of course, built to engineering specs and all that, still homes. So it's basically the same thing if you had just south of there, same kind of sound. So that's what we're looking at.
Sounds good to me.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone in the, in the audience who is opposed to the application?
Or a congressman?
Yes, sir. Want to come forward?
My question...
What's your name, sir?
Sam Benson. I'm just adjacent, except for four twenty-five foot lots between his property and mine. Uh, I didn't get a notice about the zoning and planning commission meeting. That's only a hundred foot away from his property. What I can't understand, I wasn't able to get to send him because of the weather and other job responsibilities to see where these lots were that he's requesting building on. My lots are fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Uh, the lot that he mentioned, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, or...
Twenty-nine through thirty-four.
Twenty-nine through thirty-four.
Yes, sir.
I don't know where those are.
May I direct, Sam?
Yes, sir.
Besides living next to you, Sam, I own other properties in Aransas Pass besides where I don't say... No, it's nowhere near you. That's why you didn't get a notice. It's, it's, you know where Arch Street, just like I mentioned, the council?
Yes, I do.
Arch Street and Highland. We live on Houston Street, Sam.
Well, thank you.
So this, this is in a different spot?
Yes, sir.
I just don't, my street would go general business.
This is not on your street.
You guys can't keep it up now. It's a, it's a Caliche Road, and I have to beg for two or three years to get it fixed.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else in the audience who might be opposed to the application? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
So this will bring us to item number B, to consider an act on the request of Rocky Chakan and Kevin Pollak to rezone on R seven A single-family dwelling district to a general business in the city of Rans' Past. The property is described as P T Lot six, seven, and eight, and, and twenty-nine through thirty-four here in Rans' Past pile addition, zero point two forty-eight acres of Rans' Past. The property is currently zoned for R seven A single-family dwelling district. What is the pleasure of the council on item B? Eleven B.
I make a motion that we approve the request to rezone it from R seven A to general business.
I'll second it. All in first, say aye.
Aye. Thanks, sir.
Uh, this, excuse me, this is item C, uh, which is a public hearing on the request of Terry Harrison for a conditional use permit, uh, for enclosed storage units. Property, uh, is presently zoned general business, but is, does not, does, but does not permit enclosed storage units in that particular area. Property is zoned, or is described as the north half of tracks one, two, three, and four, Block One, McCambles subdivision. Is Terry Harrison present? Yes, sir, Mr. Harrison.
Yeah, I'm Terry Harrison. I live at one, two, two, four Meadowbrook Drive, Portland.
And what is, did you want to do?
Uh, we're wanting to build storage units.
Okay.
And some, uh, at the present time, we're wanting to put the EU store type storage, and, uh, probably we'll go into, uh, environmental storage, possibly even boat or, or boat storage, RV storage, something like that.
What's the street address there? What is the street address?
Well, I don't know what it is. It, it borders on Avenue A, and then it borders on Marshall Lane.
Okay.
And it's just where we want to build them is, uh, up toward the highway, would be right across from the butter chair.
That's what I was gonna ask. Like, right behind it?
Yes, it's to the south of it. If you, if you know where the tank battery is there, the tank battery is a part of the property that we're buying. We're not buying any of the minerals, and, uh, so we'll probably want to build a, a wall of eight-foot fence or something around that, where it looks a little better. We won't try to shake the place up.
Well, you understand you have to comply with the, the city's landscaping ordinances and those type of things.
What type of, uh, throws red flags, the environmental?
Uh, we're...
What are you looking at, chemical waste?
The company that owns the minerals is out of Houston. And, uh, I've been trying to get, I talked to the lead engineer. He was down here the other day. They were changing out a pump. And I talked to him about that, see if there'd been any environmental work done. And he said, yes, it had a full-blown environmental study done within the past few years, but he didn't know exactly what year it is. I've been in contact with him twice, trying to get a copy of it. He told me that would probably give me a copy of it. But our buying the property is, is based upon getting the zoning change, and of course, they're not gonna let me have a copy of that till we, till we get the thing going.
Tiffany, now, you, you understand this is not a zoning change?
I don't mean a zoning change.
Conditional use permit?
Conditional use permit.
Okay. But you said you were contemplating doing some environmental storage, as I understood it a while ago.
That's what I heard. Climate controlled.
Climate control, but I...
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. He said, he said environmental, as I understood.
There's a, there's a, there's a big time difference.
Right.
Climate control.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, whenever you get the old man, you say the year.
Well, you kinda got everybody's ears perked up when you said that.
It's been giving me a little relief back.
Any other questions of the, of the council?
No.
Let me ask, is there anyone present who is opposed to this application for a conditional use permit? If not, thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
We got it clarified.
I would point out to the council that P and Z, uh, has recommended a one-year conditional use permit with, uh, general conditions, that being to comply with the city's landscape ordinances, keeping the property clean in need and general. So with that, I declare this public hearing closed.
Bless you. This brings item D then, to considering that. What is the favor of the council on this?
I make a motion that we approve the request by Terry Harrison, uh, with all the rules and regulations by the city and the conditions set forth by the P and Z.
For one year.
For one year.
Isn't that, that's what they said, right?
Yes.
Nice second.
Rand second, Vicki second. Oh, Billy, I'm sorry. I flip, I flip a coin. Billy got it.
All right, thank you, Vicki. I hit the buzzer first.
All in first, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing, item E, on the request of Virginia Buffkin to rezone from single-family dwelling district, uh, R ten to manufactured home district. Property is located, or described as Outlot forty-eight, track two, east one half of three, being seven point oh five acres. I saw Virginia, you...
The half of track three was general business. Not estimated from two, one and two, Wonder Oster Park, or just two, was, um, so it's general. And track, half of track three is supposed to be general business.
Okay, well, you want to address the council, tell them what you want to do?
I have the plans here. I'd like to show them to the council. These were given to, um, for you all to look at when we went before planning and zoning, but they have made it to planning and zoning are, to be honest. It's still nice to go with the, the town.
What are you telling me about the description now? Okay, but, 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 but the property you're talking about is Outlot forty-eight, track two, and the east half of three. Okay, all right.
Have we turned in left? That property is right there in front of the aquatic center and all that, right, or in that area? How many RVs, well? How many, yeah, how many RVs do you have? How many spaces do you have? About seventy? Is it, is it gonna have like a fence all the way around? So it'd be something similar to the one on Ransom Park, typical? Sure. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
And I'm a very little space to y'all, because I'm a little bit speaking in public. But I would just like to tell you a little bit what she knows I'm doing. And, uh, ninety-two years, he was developing, going around the southern part of Texas, and he's been in a lot of RV parks, and we've been friends with him for a number of years. But, um, first of all, it's definitely going to be an RV park. It's never, ever going to be a mobile home park. It's certainly never, ever going to be a trailer park. There won't be any permanent structures there. In case of a hurricane, all those RVs can do is get out. There are some people that would like to see still towns there. A hurricane comes, those still towns are gonna be in all those other people's homes. The RVs are gonna be out of here.
Right.
Um, there's a few reasons that, well, a couple reasons that we've been told they don't want it. One is traffic. Ransom Road has three RV parks and a main, that's a dead end street. There's never been traffic back up there. They don't come at the same time, and they don't leave at the same time. Another is drainage, flooding. If y'all would study the plans, give with us, give with the developer, the plans are going to actually mediate in current flooding and definitely project any future flooding. I mean, we're gonna fix that problem, not cause any more problems. And we had an environmental study on the project. The EPA has given us their, their, you know, there's no problems there. We're not gonna disturb anything, we're not gonna violate nothing. Um, we were told by one of the zoning commissioners that they didn't want it because he lives here. We live here too.
Yes, we do.
We're from here. We've been in Aransas Pass for the past forty years. Both of my parents own businesses here, each of them employing citizens of the community. I myself own two businesses here, employing the same citizens of the community. It's never been their idea to come in here and make it worse. It's only been their idea to come in here and make it better. And it's the same thing with the RV park. It's, um, they purchased this property in the early eighties, have paid taxes on it every year since then. We don't want still houses there. That's not what she wants. If she doesn't get to do the RV park, then it will probably just sit there vacant for who knows how long. I mean, I don't like the fact that somebody else can come in here and say, well, this is what we want on that property, when they're not the ones paying taxes on it.
Right. May I ask you, ma'am, if, uh, are you gonna do like a concrete slab, or is that what you're looking at?
Lots of concrete.
Lots of concrete.
Okay, right.
It's not gonna be an isolate, I can assure you. It will be something that the city will be proud to have there. Just like your, your welcome to Rans' Past page online says that, you know, y'all are trying to make this the most desirable place to live in as well as visit. That's the same thing we're trying to do. We're in no way trying to destroy the integrity of this city at all, no way. I mean, that is on a main thoroughfare. I mean, what better place for something like that, as you're coming into Aransas Pass, to see an upscale RV park? I have a friend that purchased an RV about three months ago. She called fourteen different RV parks in this area and could not find a spot. If we don't have it to offer them, they're gonna go where it is offered. And I have a restaurant, and in the six months that the winter check-ins are here, they are the bulk of our business. They do spend their money here. And if we don't have them here, then somebody else is gonna get it, you know?
And I agree with you, because I have an RV also, and there's times, especially for Marie. I rent Ransom Park just so I can walk back and forth. So...
I mean, like I said, it's, it's not gonna be applied by knife, you know, chain link fence around it. It's, it's...
It's gonna be quality.
It is gonna be quality.
I believe that.
And, I mean, I think that Aransas Pass has the need for it, for sure.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's, that's what we're asking.
Well, the, the application, as I understand, is for a ma- manufactured home district.
It's, well, that, I think, is just in the, in the language.
Sylvia changed all the language about eight months.
Okay, but I just want to be sure, we're not talking about...
No, we, no, no, no manufactured homes.
Okay.
No mobile homes, no trailer houses, strictly RV. However, that is something to be considered in the future, whether that property ends up being sold to another person. That property's going to be known manufactured home, so there is the possibility that whoever acquires that property in the future could develop it.
Could you put a stipulation on it or something?
We could put a stipulation, right, that, Alan, on this one? Just keep it, other than your home center where everybody comes to meet and conjugate.
Right.
Right. Any other questions?
Any questions or comments about the council? Is there anyone present who is opposed to the application? Yes, sir. Want to come forward? All right.
Steven Jones, I'm fifteen fifty South Arch. Basically, you're talking about the RV parks on Ransom Road. If you've driven down here and looked at some of those homes, those are not mobile RVs. People have porches, decks. They may as well be, you know, kind of...
Well, tho- those have been, to the time Alan's grandfather did, right?
They are.
Not really.
Yeah, it doesn't bother me.
You're talking about it in Hampton's Landing, probably, I don't think, aren't you?
Correct, yeah. I came to Aransas in two thousand and two, and I think if you looked at the zoning committee, they had sixteen letters and eight of us here last time. Since that time, and I've been here from this picture, you can see there have been over thirty-four new houses, and other houses have been remodeled. This is because it's a prime jewel part of the Aransas Pass. You've got the ballpark, you've got the aquatic center, you've got the fireworks. I mean, tonight, there's dozens of families out there playing, getting ready for the bass, baseball practice. So when you drive into Aransas Pass, you come in from Indian's side, and look, you got a lot of nice houses and all the other houses that have just been built around here. You want these people to drive into Aransas Pass and see another RV park? This is the wrong place for it. There's eight RV parks within eight tenths of a mile of that area. And I have nothing against them. I've owned RVs in the past too. And I have nothing against them, I've owned RVs in the past too. And I know it is hard, and the winter taxes go, there's a lot of places to go. Basically, I think that area is part of the jewel that attracts people here. People come in here and they think, this looks like a great place. And if that lot is changed to an RV park instead of homes, I just think it's going to blemish your jewel, basically evaluate our properties. That's my view.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present who's opposed?
I'm Donna Cox, I live at fifteen fourteen Kenwood. I'm right across the highway from the proposed RV park. I agree with the gentleman who just spoke. It's on one of our major entrance corridors to the city. We worked so hard to clean up Aransas Pass and change the image here. I think to add another RV park just down scales what we've got. I have an RV as well. I understand the need for places to put them, but on one of our major entrance corridors is not what we're trying to do here. Tax-wise, to have homes there will give us much more income on a regular basis. If we have an RV park, you've got vacant land. She's making lots of money, but we're still taxing them just on the land. There aren't substantial improvements. It's not going to help our tax base and our income as a city. You're going to have transient people who come in for part of the time and bring money six months of the year, like winter Texans. The other six months of the year, we're all separating. We don't have the water customers the six months of the year. We have to go in and put in the meters, we have to have the meter readers, we have to invest in the infrastructure, but we don't have the business to keep it going. In terms of traffic, it's a very dangerous curve. There are a number of accidents there. In fact, my assistant was involved in an accident, broke his arm there a few weeks ago. The chief will tell you, because it's a highway, that we have to get the Department of Transportation to give us the ability to either lower the speed limit or to add some sort of traffic control device there. It's right on the curve. That takes an act of Congress in the state to get any sort of traffic control there. It's a really dangerous area. People tend to speed coming through there anyway, so to add the additional traffic is going to make it really, really difficult. So, I'd request that you deny the request.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who is opposed to the application? Yes, sir?
My name is Richard O'Ran, and I own Ransom Road RV Park. And I just wanted to tell the council that a previous council looked at this similar type of project and rejected it because of the drainage problem it's going to create, which we're only about half a mile down the road, which the drainage would have affected us. The other big problem is, as the lady stated, traffic. Our biggest problem at our park is traffic. We have forty-five foot RVs come in off the highway, they have to make the short turn there at the Red Barn, they come down to us, and we're only, we only have forty-five feet from our fence to the road. So, it creates a tremendous traffic problem. And I just want the council to consider that, because they're further up in the curve, and I don't think it's going to be good.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who is opposed? Yes, sir, you want to respond? Oh, I'm sorry, just, yes, sir? Did you have something? Yes, sir?
Eli De La Cruz, I'm at one eight zero East Johnson. Kind of in a bad situation here because our, some of our neighbors are here and unfortunately it's an opposing issue, so I apologize for that. However, I think also that that should stay as a housing area. Kind of just want to, and I sent a letter, just wanted to reiterate again the same thing, that that is a prime area. We always look out the window, look at the houses behind us, the different colors, and they just really look charming. And when I first came to this area, like I said, you would go one part of town and you see a rundown house and a good house, and a rundown house and then a good house, you know? And when I asked the people about this place, they said, oh, you mean the one with the rundown house and the good house? That's the way they referred to Aransas Pass, you know? So, I think if we get to a consistent building, I guess, quality of where all the houses are coming up better, you know? Also, like, I didn't get your name, but I think as well, you know, that that's going to be better for the city, it's going to be better income for the city, and you're going to see an area that looks all the same, you know, at least, maybe not the whole city, but at least a part of the area in that area, because you're going to have, of course, the shrimp fence and all this stuff, you know? You're going to get lots and lots of people, they're going to get an image of the city, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other opposition? Yes, sir?
My name's Robert Trevino, fifteen forty-nine South Commercial, Unit fourteen. I'm here to represent Coastal Run Cotages. Those are the developments adjacent, I guess, to the property. There's twenty-four units, still two more to be built, and as a whole, the community has decided that this is not something that they would like to have so close to the property because as we all are owners there, we do pay taxes, we do pay, like I said, utilities to maintain our houses, and I think that there should be a detriment to the property values. So, unfortunately, I love eating at their restaurants, I hate doing this, but as the vice president for the homeowners association, I have to represent our residents.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, you want to respond? What, you want to come up forward?
Yes, sir. My is Mike Fields, I'm a proponent of the RV park. And as a matter of fact, I think these people have been part of the community for quite a long time, along with their families and businesses, and do have some gravity as far as the future of what, you know, they're part of town might look. But what I was wanting to say was that I've lived here forty years. I live in Rockford, and for the last twelve years, I live in subdivision. It's a Whistler's Cove, it's one of the newer ones, it's not, not the high dollar, but it's a above median neighborhood. Adjacent to it, across the property line, is the Lagoons RV Park. And there, there's been no negative interference from the two. The RV loom has matured, it's grown up, it's not, it's not troubled, it's grown people like us, with quarter million dollar homes, some of them. And the, there's been no negative to attribute between the two neighborhoods. They're good. And we kind of, I know they have a problem with the, with the curve there, but the design we have, we're going to, they're going to have to pull off the main highway, get down on the side street, pull into place, you know? RVers I know, they drive these things in the Rocky Mountains. I think they can handle coming around a curve like that. I know everybody has the problems with it, and I know that if you're against it, you're against it. But I've always been able to make those curves in my opinion. But anyway, I just, I just think that they have, it's their property, and if you don't change the zone on it, they're not going to build houses these people want. And if you build an RV park, you don't really question, your integrity of the land is still there. You keep your own options open. Whatever the future brings, you want to build a hot rise there, or if you want to build apartments, it doesn't matter. The building opportunity's still there. It's not like you've got to do one or another. You put an RV park in, your options are still open. And I've always thought options being open was the best way to go, but anyway, I think, I think it'd be a good time for...
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alan?
I would like to speak as a citizen myself.
Okay.
And I'll come around. I understand the concern, you know, with the houses around there, you know, you will have to see the homes. As a citizen, and to say that was my property, first I would tell you goodbye to me, to build a house yourself. I do RV, so I do understand, it's my business to live around private, you know, it's something that you, as an adult, you appreciate, so you also, you meet a lot of good people. I don't mean to turn my back to the council, you meet a lot of good people. That's the only places I know where you can go to an RV park and actually let your kid run and be safe in a safe environment. So, as a taxpayer, not the mayor, I really would love to see a high-quality, nice RV park in the area. Because with Trippery coming around, like I said, I do rent for Ransom Park. It's an advantage for me, you know, it saves people traveling back and forth. But there's also a lot of opportunities because I have people that are staying in Rockford, but we can go to Rockford if we can, and about where you're from, we have to be doing here. Little quick getaway, five minutes getaway after work, just to be able to sit under a chair and enjoy one, with the family, and meet all the people who come to our town, just around the area, to tell them about the restaurants we have, what we have offered. It's a, be personally, definitely a good deal. And like I said, if you own the property, you can do whatever you want with it, you know, as long as it counts of the size. But that's my piece, I just wanted to bring it out.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mayor Collins, two Sylvia, just to say that she'd like the whole law, that the council would approve of it because they're trying to develop standards for these types of places so that we don't have to, like, organize a counter, twenty-five, where they're all sharing a water line control, but somebody in front, they've got to blow up above the ground sewer and stuff like that, and it just creates a huge mess. She says there's not enough standards and reviews into developing these, I think, at this time, so she would appreciate...
Okay, thank you. Do members of the council have any more questions or comments?
I do not.
Okay. Well, I would point out to council that P and Z has previously met on this, there were several written objections to it, and planning zoning has recommended your denial of the application.
How did the vote go? Did it say?
Unanimous. And with that, I declare the public...
Everybody voted, there was no abstaining?
With that, I declare the public hearing closed.
Alan? They said that they sent out twelve letters to go surround them here, to, but two hundred people, twelve people that went out, twelve only from them. I was one out, I got that. But yes, they got sixteen, they got sixteen people that said they objected to quit on that. They had, but only two from the twelve that they sent in. So, you know, where did these other papers come from?
Well, it is also published in the newspaper.
Sure.
So, any homeowners who did receive the letter in addition to the newspaper, anyone can send in an objection letter.
Absolutely.
I should probably have been more aggressive.
Yeah, you should have.
I never got a letter. I'm Carrie Scribe, six twenty Johnson Avenue. I am one acre on Johnson Avenue, forty-two hundred square foot home. I am not opposed whatsoever to Virginia Buffkin and Liz Broadway building this trailer park. Uh, RV, excuse me, RV park. These people have been phenomenal citizens of Aransas Pass. They've been here, I've been here fifty years, they've been here longer than I have. I completely support anything that they would do because what they're going to do is going to be a class act.
All right, well, the public hearing is closed, back to the council. It's my understanding from the chief that the city manager is asking that you table this, is that correct?
Well, she's asking that we're going for right now until, you know, she's asking the board speakers if you would like her to do so.
Sure.
Hey, okay, you ready? I'm putting your speaker right now. Go ahead.
Well, I am so sorry I cannot be there tonight. Well, I need to remind you guys that it doesn't, it doesn't go with property ownership. Zoning is ethereal, it follows the property, okay? Whether it's Virginia Buffkins who may have the best of intentions, or the other owner who may have the best of intentions. Right now, we have no standards for RV parks. We have nothing to say about how that RV park will be built. I remind you, we're trying to protect all of our entrance corridors from commercial to dealer to good night, all of those things that make it beautiful as we're entering Aransas Pass. Without any standards, there is nothing to prevent how that RV park will be built, absolutely nothing. We are frantically working on RV standards right now. In fact, we have a draft ordinance that should be through you latter part of April, early part of May. But to allow that RV park right now, that's why staff strongly recommend it against it, as did planning commissioners. The twenty percent rule was almost invoked because of the number of responses that were received against zoning.
Okay. Questions or anything, council?
No. So, how long is she going to be done with this?
She's the first part of me.
Wow. Like thirty days.
Did you hear that, Sylvia?
Well, if it's approved now, she's vested and doesn't have to meet any standard we accrue.
I didn't hear.
Say again, Sylvia?
If she's approved right now, she's vested and doesn't have to meet any of the standards to be passed.
Let's say, let's say we do vote on it this evening with the condition for her to follow whatever standard comes up, then they can abide by grit?
Did you hear that, Sylvia?
There's a condition?
Yeah, he's saying if they approve it this evening with the condition that they have to adhere to those standards later on.
Well, see, that's the thing, we'll grant the certificate of occupancy, but if she doesn't adhere to those, are we going to evict an RV park that has forty blocks in it? Not to mention, Carrie Ors was there today, the Noises County Number Four has caused a massive drainage issue in that area, and we're going to have a massive drainage study, the urban engineering is going to have to lead. There's, there's a number of issues with the property, not just it's in a low-lying floodplain, but, you know, those, the RV parks, while they provide a need, really, in terms of overall valuation for the city, is not the highest and best use for that property. And that's what zoning is all about, what is the highest and best use for a property? Because that's the test system of land.
The mayor's trying to interrupt you, Sylvia.
Excuse me, sir. By any chance, Mr. Terry Ors, did he tell you when he was discussing about the flow of water and everything, that he also has an RV park already? Is it like a conflict of interest of not having another RV park?
As a matter of fact, Carrie Ors was in the office today with the drainage issue. We're, we're in contact only today, did he come into the office with Noises County Number Four and Urban Engineering, the Sandpat Drainage District and Commissioner Price on trying to resolve a problem that was created right there. The new floodplain map that should still be on the council, on the council desk, right now, call that to be an elevation eleven, okay? Most of what's there is already an eleven, and it is still flooding, so that's, that's a separate issue and apart. But again, zoning is the highest and best use for a property. Commercial drainage is not that use, in my opinion.
All right. Any questions? Come on up.
See what's happening? My name is Gary Billy, I'm from Ran, uh, Rockport, own a couple restaurants, and I also own an RV park. And I tell you right now, if they come in here with the restrictions that this man is gonna put in there, it's gonna be beautiful. And it'll be like my park, my park is completely full with full-time people. They eat, most of the people in my RV park eat at my, one of my restaurants every day. They go shopping every day, they live there year-round, full-time. So, it, it's gonna be a nice park, it's gonna create a lot of tax base for this, this city and the area. And I promise you, if it's that nice, it'll be full all the time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything?
My, my comment to that is, given the proximity of that RV park, there are more restaurants in Eagle Side in that direction than there are in Aransas Pass.
Yes, sir.
Once again, I, I might be, I belong here, I have a class of voters. And, and the idea of the RV park doesn't bother me, it is a wrong area, it is flooded. I spent this whole weekend with a pump.
Excuse me.
Pumping out the water in our backyards of those four houses. Uh, the other thing I wanted, so no, I can't prove it, but I used to be the chief of anesthesia here at North Bay, and I've had four patients talk to me about that area, and that they wish they could've bought that because they were in construction, build homes, but it was not up for sale. So, the idea of that, you know, just because you own a piece of land that's not, you know, zoned for commercial, I, I just think that's just wrong. I mean, they've told me to, myself, but I can't prove that, that they tried to buy it, and I believe this cottage house, the same guy tried to buy that piece of land too, so. I mean, that land is valuable and sellable, and it could be nice.
All right, thank you, sir.
No one has made an offer to me on that property, except Ricky Wannasack, when he was city manager. Approached my husband and I, wanting to put the city center there, and, um, we did not want it.
Correct.
So, uh, but that's the only other person that has ever said anything about wanting to do something of that kind. Nobody has approached me, and I'd like to know how he knew, how he would know.
He would know that, since he has no interest in that property at all.
All right, well, thank y'all, appreciate it.
Anything else Sylvia or the mayor? Seems like everybody's done. That's it? That's it.
All right, thank y'all. So, this is item E. It's a public hearing, we got through that, now we're item F. So, consider an act and request of Virginia Buffkin to rezone from R ten to single-family dwelling district to a manufactured home, which, we're talking RVs, not manufactured homes. The city of Aransas Pass property is described out of lot forty-eight, tract two E, half of three, seven point oh five acres. Aransas Pass property is currently zoned for R ten, single-family dwelling. I'm gonna ask the pleasure of the council, with upcoming ordinances, which I'm sure will be complied by, if I can hear, have a motion for approval for the Buffkin family here.
Mayor, I really don't see how you can do that. I don't see how you can make them comply with ordinances in the future that are not in, not in existence today.
Well, I make a motion that we table this until we complete the ordinances that the city manager is working on, and let us revisit it again. That's just my motion, to take the recommendation of our city manager.
Is there a timeframe or something that y'all looking at? I know y'all had it probably for a while now. I'm talking to the Buffkin family. Yes, ma'am?
No, I mean, we're going to wait.
To wait? Okay. All right. Miss Brooke, sixty days. Give us sixty days to come up with something.
Yeah, I'd like Sylvia to have it completed in sixty days.
All right.
I made a motion, anybody?
I will second it.
All fairies say aye.
Aye. All of us?
Phillip. Phillip second.
Pick your name.
Sixty days for us to have a standard phrase. Thank you, Miss Brooke. All fairies say aye.
Aye.
This is item G under, uh, agenda number eleven, which is a public hearing, uh, to amend the general business use tables concerning open storage visual screens. Is somebody present to speak to this?
Oh, well, this item was created in regards to their co-storage, they're looking at doing open storage in their area. Um, and they had originally requested to be rezoned to heavy industrial, but after discussions with staff and planning commission, we figured that it would be best because we had previously removed the open storage visual screening component from the use tables, but this would put it back on the use tables, but with stipulations, um, as uncomply with landscaping and the white mortgage and having certain standards in mind. So, that's what that was in place for. Um, I don't know if, uh, they're coming here and I.
No, thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
So, you're, you're just putting one of the, one of the requirements for the, under the use table to require visual screens?
Yes.
That's all it is?
Right.
Anyone have any comments?
No.
Okay, the public hearing's closed.
Now, bring us to item H, consider an act on the request of amendment to general business use tables, use number two oh seven, open storage visual screens.
Oh, and can I add something else?
And just one more.
This is just to put it back on the use table, we're planning and zoning will also be discussing further stringent stipulations on this. So, this is just to put it back on the use table, we'll be coming back to you after the April meeting to discuss more string and be probably, um, I think one of the things we were discussing was standing the conditional use permit to a five-year, a five-year conditional use permit, so. So, we'll have more stipulations coming to you.
Well, I make a motion that we approve their amending the use two oh seven, open storage visual screens back on the use tables.
Second. All fairies say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This brings us to item number twelve, consider an act on reassigning the Aransas Pass Public Works Director as the traffic engineer. What we got on that?
Lighter, easier agenda item. Sylvia and I had gotten, gotten into a discussion about traffic engineering, I've been asked and approached several times about, uh, adding speed humps and dealing with things that affect, uh, traffic structures and stuff like that, road structures. And, uh, I don't think that I'm qualified to engineer string during the flow of that, and we kind of recognized it long before, but, uh, it was recommended that we transfer that responsibility over to Fernando, with his department. Because he's actually has the staff that, that's their primary focus and responsibility, dealing with that. The other thing is, for the benefit of everybody, and people don't really realize this, but T M L's recommendation is that you do not use speed humps, and that seems to be one of the number one speed, uh, control methods that people like for us to use. But that's caused some cities undue liability in, uh, in having to put them in and maintain them.
Did T M L say what to do?
Uh, speed always comes down to enforcement, and unfortunately.
So, what you're saying, more police officers?
Or, or us to focus on those areas, and that's, that's just simply too difficult to stay in an area until a violation. And on some of them where we get constant complaints in certain areas, we will do that, we'll try to hit the best time to try to capture the problem. And we will put staff there to focus. On one occasion, we have a lot of complaints on commercial, Johnson and Commercial, we get a ton of complaints about speed violators and stuff there. We actually, uh, on one occasion for a whole week, sent out officers on overtime trying to see what the, what the hoop law was, and we were not impressed with what we were able to catch. So, it is, it, it, it really varies.
True.
So anyways, when it comes down to traffic engineering, I, I'm glad we recommend that we hand it off to the Public Works Director. And, uh, let his crew start handling the address of those from now on. We'll still deal with the enforcement recommendations as they come up, and stuff like that, stop that. But ultimately, it needs to be his oversight, maybe to determine if it's actually feasible to traffic.
True. I make a motion that we reassign a Public Works Director as the traffic engineer.
I'll second it. All fairies say aye.
Aye.
You're welcome Fernando.
Congratulations.
This is gonna bring us to item number thirteen, our city manager updates, uh, Mrs. Donna Cox. Or Eric, or Amanda.
Actually, I am.
All right. That's good.
And I'm just gonna give you an update on our coastal resilience plan that the city was funded with a grant from the Gulf of Mexico Alliance. So, um, I don't know. So, that cancels?
Yeah.
Um, my name's Amanda Corse, I'm the administrative assistant. So, I'm just getting an update, um, and this is for a comprehensive resiliency committee, like I said, um, it's for, from the Gulf of Mexico Alliance that's funding us. Um, so, um, so basically, um, this is about resiliency and how the city can bounce back after a storm event or any hazardous situation. So, disaster resilience is the capacity of a community to adapt in order to function after a hazard event. So, last year, I don't know if you remember, we had Heather Wade and Kristen Ransom from Mission Aransas Reserve come and talk about the coastal resilience index. The department heads had done a, um, workshop-type, um, event where they looked at a scenario of a certain, a storm, and saw how certain, um, parts of the city kind of would, would manage in a hazardous situation, such as infrastructure, facilities, transportation, community plans agreements between neighboring communities and that sort of thing, and mitigation measures, business planning, and social systems, so. So, um, this was our scenario building before we started looking at how everything would, would manage in a storm scenario. We, we looked at two storms, one a past storm, which was Hurricane Celia, and we, we wrote down the wind speed, the rainfall, the storm surge, the direction, the speed of movement, that sort of thing. And then we created a bigger and better hurricane, and we named it after our city manager. Sylvia, so this would be even worse, and we saw how our infrastructure and that sort of thing would manage in a hurricane event. So, before I tell you the scores, these are basically what they mean. Um, low means that the community should pay specific attention to these items. A medium means we're okay, but we could make it better, and high means we're well-prepared in that particular item. So, our results, um, the first one we looked at was critical infrastructure, this is looking at items like our wastewater treatment plant, our water system, and that sort of thing. Um, our critical facilities would be where is our city hall located, and other critical facilities? And since we're in a low-lying area, you know, we're more prone to flooding and hazardous situations. So, that's why those two items are considered low, and we need to pay attention to those. Um, as for our transportation issues, we have, um, that was given a medium rating, and that's because our access to roads and our traffic management during a hazardous situation is, is all right, but it couldn't be approved. Um, also, our memorandums of understanding between our neighboring communities and the coastal, or the council of governments, we, we have pretty good MOUs with them. Also, our mitigation measures are, are fairly good as well. Um, and mitigation measures would include our, our building standards, our zoning standards, and that sort of thing. Um, business plans and social system rank low, but that's mostly because of the lack of information on our, on our part. Um, business pa, plans looks at our major retailers, what do they do after a hurricane event? Do, does their staff come in quickly, and do they have generators, do they have water supplies, that sort of thing? Can we depend on them after a storm event to be up and running, to get what we need? Um, also, so, so, social systems look at the strength of our community organizations. Are there a lot of faith-based organizations, are there neighborhood associations, that kind of thing? So, that was mostly like kind of lack of data, and that's why we ranked low on those things. Um, and also, before I, before I go back to that, um, although we had a lot of low and mediums back on that, um, it, it was actually pretty common around communities in this area. Eagle Side has already, or has done the C R I before, Corpus Triste has, Rockport has, and they also got low and medium ranking. So, it's pretty common in this area. Okay, so the next steps we plan on doing after completing the C R I, is looking at the city's mitigation plan, what can we do to prevent hazardous, um, situations from affecting us? Um, also developing a strategic plan that disasters, or that addresses this disaster preparedness. Um, we're also looking at developing a shoreline restoration plan, which actually I was discussing with the nature conservancy today, but I will give you an update at the end of why they're involved now. Um, and then finally, to building relationships with local organizations and industry, so we can build this network of a community that'll bounce back after a hazardous situation. So, okay, so this is just the list of our resiliency committee, which includes myself, Phil Haynes, who is our, now our harbor master, he was our emergency management coordinator, and our new emergency management coordinator, Lynn Pierce is also on there. Rosemary is representing the chamber and our business component. I've also got Colby Gemmell, she's with the Mission Aransas Reserve, and Heather Wade, who is, she was with Texas Sea Grant, but now she's with the Heart Research Institute. And then also Richard Gonzalez, who's with the Science and Spanish Club Network. So, um, as I had mentioned, the city actually received a grant from the Gulf of Mexico Alliance to, to create this comprehensive resiliency plan, and these are our goals. To develop a long-year plan over a five-year range to address coastal resiliency here in Aransas Pass, and then conduct this community-wide outreach campaign to make the, uh, community aware of coastal resiliency. So, um, that's why I have these surveys, I put some surveys out on your desk. I've also got surveys back here, um, for anyone to fill out, because I need as much data from the community as possible. I wanna find out which is the best way to get in contact, is it through social media? Do we need to create videos, commercials, do we need to make a print guide? What is the best way to communicate this information to the community? So, basically, this is a short synopsis of our project timeline, we've established the coastal resilience team, um, and we started community forum planning, I have been meeting with some of the civic organizations, I spoke at a chamber luncheon about this, I've met with the Rotary, Women's Club, Ministerial Alliance. And we will actually be having a large community stakeholder meeting March thirtieth, and this will be more interactive, this will be at six P M. at the Civic Center. So, everybody is invited to come, because this will be interactive, and we'd like to field ideas from the community on these particular items, infrastructure, facilities, business plans, that sort of thing, so that way we can get that community input in making this plan, um, as, as good as it can be.
Amanda, just to remind you on the, when we do have a meeting to post it, there may be a quorum?
Yes. Yes.
Present place.
Yes, I will remember. And, uh, once we have all this data, we plan on wrapping up the survey and that sort of thing, we'll, we're gonna start working on drafting the plan. And once we have a final, or, you know, a close to final draft, we'll be presenting it back to those stakeholder meetings so they can review it, say, you know, this needs to be added, this needs to be edited, that sort of thing. And we'll have a large community forum to present the final plan and tactical implementation at the end of it, which is probably going to be in December. So, next one. So, how can you get involved? You're hearing about the resiliency plan, so, um, when I presented this, you could attend it. If you have an organization that you think would be beneficial, anyone in the audience, if you think it's beneficial for your organization to hear about it, please contact me. My contact information is on that slide as well as the other person helping me, Colby Gemmell. Um, and I'd love to speak to your organization about the plan that we're just developing. Please tell your friends, please fill out the survey. I really need this data and I want as much community input as possible. Um, the survey basically has questions on what are you gonna do in a hurricane? Are you gonna stay? Are you gonna leave? Um, what are your priorities? What's the best way to communicate information to you? So that data is very crucial to developing this plan. And again, we're going to be having a large stakeholder meeting March thirtieth, which is two Mondays from now, six PM at the Civic Center. And it'll be interactive and we'll get involved and, you know, all that good stuff. So, any questions?
You did really well.
Good job Amanda.
Oh wait, wait.
Encore, encore.
Okay, um, then also the nature conservancy has gotten involved in this plan. Um, they're going to provide technical assistance in, in looking at the environmental part and what areas need to be preserved because there's a lot of marsh and mangrove and seagrass areas. And those actually protect the city in a natural disaster. So I was actually discussing the, that part today with them. And they're actually, they, they've actually applied for a grant with the Texas Seegrant to basically do a spinoff of what we're doing here in Aransas Pass. So, a lot of cool things that are happening, so it's exciting. So that's that too. I'm done, I promise.
So who has the torch awards donation?
Do you know anything about the torch awards donation?
Yeah, I'm not done. Um, torch awards is basically the high schools does a, an awards banquet for its top twenty percent, I believe. They're asking for a donation. I, I think that might even be the backup item. I'm not sure. And I forgot to announce real fast. But they're asking for a donation, so if the council is interested in donating to that event, then we can put that on for your, for your council.
I think it's a good cost.
We'll put it on.
The next.
One hundred, two fifty or five hundred dollars. Yeah. So we're gonna.
No, we'll put it on the council. And we can make a request on the floor or you have a certain amount of money.
Okay. And then, I don't know anything about the FEMA meeting, other than it took place and that the, still needs to be worked on. Anybody else want to talk about it? Well, let Sylvia do that one.
There you go. Here's something I look forward to.
And the last one is the police update.
Council, uh, this last month, February two thousand and fifteen, that's what these updates are for. Twenty-two hundred eighty-three calls, three hundred forty-eight total traffic stops, a hundred and sixty-four citations. When you heard that last meeting that we had fifteen a week, that's because they were addressed because we had a decline in traffic citations. And they're increasing again, being warned. Crash reports down to twenty-three, arrests were down from fifty-six to forty-three, juvenile detention were down to four-two, code enforcement's down to six. The officer's been carrying a lot of other responsibilities in the absence of a building official. Some of the highlights of this last month is we extended an offer for a new patrol captain. His first day was on Monday, and forgive me, I was gonna bring him tonight to introduce him, but, uh, we kinda got carried away with some activities today, it was kind of a busy Monday. But I'll try to get him up here for one of the next meetings to introduce him. His name's David Wood. He had left law enforcement as a detective last in the county to go to the oil field. He needed to take care of some financial obligations, but he couldn't stay far away. He's come back. He's got experience as an investigator and also as a chief of police in TAF. And he's very, very skilled and versed in law enforcement. We're blessed to have him. Pet licensing, we started offering that online out of where the residents could submit a application online for their pet license or their tags. And then they can pick them up after hours. And that was in direct response when we had that last meeting. We got that done, I think, maybe within a couple of days. And she's already taking care of hers. Animal control, just to update you, we have, we have hired an animal control officer. We're not ready to release her yet. We have to get some things fixed first, the facility as far as some doors. We need the floor sealed and cleaned up. She's working on all of that right now for us. She's also getting everything necessary so she can get going. Uh, I think we're kind of blessed because she comes from the ci, uh, city of Odessa. She worked animal control over there, has several certifications. And Odessa has an animal control facility with fourteen full-time employees. So she has some experience coming over into the area here. Her husband actually replaced her position over here and she saw the opening and applied. On the Jenna Hernandez murder case, uh, the CID captain, Kyle Rhodes, and I, and I credit him for this, he has not relented with that case. There were two individuals, Johnny Davis and Joshua Davis, who were directly involved for soliciting the murder of Jenna. They both have been charged with solicitation of murder. We're going forward. And we've got a lot of evidence, so we're very hopeful that we're gonna have a good outcome. But, uh, we don't quit. You kill a sixteen-year-old in our community or take violence against a child, then we're gonna come at you. And all stakes are out. So, uh, and just a reminder, uh, the last guy, Mireles, received sixty years in prison. He turned down a twenty-five-year plea. And, uh, the jury decided to give him sixty after they convicted him. We had a capital murder this past month. Uh, three individuals were hanging out at Cedar Lodge, drinking. Uh, one thing led to another. We don't think it was a passion event or nothing like that, but we do think that the individual, uh, the male female took advantage of the other individual, beat him to death and then robbed him. Both are in jail currently. And of course, our animal control event that we had, uh, with the two employees, one employee admitted that she had, uh, come into contact with some money that was brought by a patron. She kept that money. Uh, the patron tried to inquire about whether or not the money had been found on a couple occasions and she concealed it from her. She shared that with the supervisor. The supervisor did not do the right thing and said, hey, you created that problem, you fix that problem. And that employee came to us the following week and, and revealed that both were released from employment. And though the victim did not want to file charges, when you're in our position of being a public servant, we will file charges on you. We have to. And so she was charged with felony theft. No other updates, uh, for that month, but we're building for the next one.
I have a couple of questions for either of three of y'all wanna answer, or can. Uh, one of them is, uh, fire hydrant. They wrote over here about the, the library, the main one for.
Wheeler.
Wheeler, don't always straight down to commercial. There's a fire hydrant that.
Harrison.
Harrison Boulevard.
Harrison Boulevard.
We, I know we replaced three hydrants or two. There's a one in between that has not been fixed, it's kinda sitting at, at an angle. I would hope for maybe somebody gets a chance to look at it.
That is Wheeler, that's Wheeler and McCambeau.
Yeah, Wheeler and McCambeau.
Yeah, uh, the way I understand it, when I had inquired, there is like valve damage on the bottom of the pipe, so they can't isolate it to repair it.
Well, there's something they're maybe looking at.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll inquire again and make sure that we have access to his mouth so you guys know what the issue is.
Alright. Yeah, Wheeler and McCambeau.
And then another issue is, once, uh, I guess for Mr. Get the Nia, once we get the graders and stuff, we can look at, uh.
Two, five.
Saunders, but, uh, Mr. Davidson, that's Kyle. If I may be right or wrong, I don't know, that's Michael Davidson over there in the back. Is that you, sir?
No.
Not with the cat, okay, my bad. There's one road over there that I had brought up to service attention, I think you might have looked at.
We actually did a great study, those two roads are might be on that.
Okay.
There's said there's several roads that.
I know. Right. And then what else? Question was brought, oh, question was brought up that Lily maybe have any issues with, uh, with, uh, ants in the fields and stuff. I know open ceremonies is coming up. And somebody was asking if the city may be able to help with the insecticides.
I don't know if the contract states that you're watching this year. So, if you can find out that the city is responsible.
Okay, so I guess what we gotta do to check into that? Appreciate that too. What else? I'm trying to think. I know like all of council members, people do come to us and ask us questions, it's hard to kinda remember them all.
What I was gonna ask if, uh, when you hire a police officer, if you can somewhat bring him into the cha, a council meeting so we can meet him? Cause I know there's, there's new officers and I don't get out as much, you know, coming into the police department, I don't try to get there right at all. But, uh, yeah, it would be good for us to meet him, uh, so we'll, you know, introduce themselves to us. And I think that would be, that would be good.
Like I said, I was gonna try to start that with this one. I got distracted, but we will have him before.
Thank you.
Trying to think, I know somebody told me something, asked me something. I guess that's about it. Oh, the main one, main important one, and I asked her about it, she said, ask Donna. Did we, uh, give a response to Gulf Marine about the water bill issue because they wanted one before the twenty-seventh of March of where the city stood?
I haven't emailed Sylvia. I was on vacation last week and got back today, so I'm not familiar with exactly what the inquiry is. So, nothing's been done in the last week, I can tell you that, cause I wasn't here.
Okay, okay. But I, I just, uh, the new gentleman that took over for Gulf Marine sent me an email this morning to confirm that about two weeks ago, I had, I think two weeks ago, when he first approached me, he had brought up to service attention. And I asked her today and she said that.
She and I actually have a meeting scheduled.
Okay.
I'm on her calendar for Thursday.
Alright, I think I'm good now. So that takes care of our, uh, updates and everything. Unless council has any questions.
Just wanna know how we are on the water line.
Johnny.
You just brought up another one, Vicki.
I just wanna, just wanna update on those, cause I know there's some that we have a time limit.
Many referring to the arm market, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, we're on schedule. Should be, be a construction here before too long. And, uh, should be completing construction in September.
Alright. Okay, thank you.
Johnny, I have a question to you, the water line by the cemetery over here, going towards Ingleside, uh.
Ten sixty.
Ten sixty-nine. Do, are we stopped? Are we done with it or is it gonna go continue further towards the SPCA area?
Cemetery section was completed using city resources. There was a question regarding grant funding for the section, uh, between the cemetery and Highland. That grant funding is still up in the air. If the grant funding does not come through, then city staff has made arrangements to where, uh, that portion of the water line extension can be funded through the city's capital program. So, at this point, we're waiting to see, uh, get a final determination on whether that grant funding will be available. What happened is that that's a part, uh, that grant funding is based on a minimum participation of the local residents. And at this point in time, we have not achieved that number that the grant program is looking for.
I guess what I'm asking is like the water line going towards, back towards Walmart?
Yeah, from Dan Marine to.
That's all part of it.
That's all the same, cause.
It, it has two sections, skipping the cemetery section. That was skipped because of all the, uh, regulatory issues in, in doing construction adjacent to the cemetery. So that was done separate and in advance of the rest of the project. So the grant project would be the section up to the cemetery, uh, from the Montpass area, uh, highway thirty-five area to the cemetery, and then from the cemetery back toward Highland. The design work is underway, well underway, designed to, to go down to Highland and then Highland all the way down to town to complete that. That's part of the, the general street improvement, the street and utility improvements that that's going on there.
So what kind of timeframe for maybe that may come to like, cause I know the SPCA is already asking for water for their building.
Uh, we really have to check with the project engineer, design, we're in detailed design right now. Design, I'm thinking we complete for the end of summer. So hopefully see it beginning. I need to retract that because there were some parts of the project we wanted to get underway in spring. So, uh, we're looking at a phased project. There's gonna be a new voice water station required in the Highland area, uh, the water line extension. So, uh, the, the project is being broken up into phases, logical phases, uh, with the, uh, progression of construction. So, uh, we should see some of the early stage construction, we're ready to go late spring. But the project as a whole, let's say, the remainder of the street improvements, uh, the rest of the drainage improvements, uh, be later in the year. Should expect some of the utility improvements to get to the end of the year.
Look, I'm gonna push this ass if I wanna be able to give you the proper information.
We have a engineering report due, due a few years and, uh, we're gonna have to talk to the project engineering project managers. We do something a little more detailed, uh, rather than just a, a local update, we'll provide you with a written report, a little more facts, a little more details, timelines, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amanda, whatever information we get on that water line headed towards that direction, towards Walmart, we send a notice to the SPCA to give them some kind of timeframe idea or at least explain what's going on this week taking the bill, the bill delay. Appreciate that. Donna, you good, right?
Pretty much, Eric.
Yeah, Sylvia just wanted me to comment in there, she really appreciates all the staff here and everything, helping us build her shoes, you can see their big shoes.
Charis is high cam, right?
Alright, well, I appreciate that. And that brings item number fourteen, we're gonna, the gentleman of the meeting, do I hear a motion for to give?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
You say it. All fair to say hi.
Hi.
And thank y'all for coming out tonight.